Andy, can you hear me? Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can see.
Andy, Andy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
Sam, and I believe we're ready.
All right, thank you very much. We will call the November twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Newtown Township Board of Supervisors to order. I will announce that the board did meet in an executive session where we discussed a litigation matter revolving an employee disability matter as well as a personnel matter related to a potential, to potential hires. With that being said, we will now move into the roll call.
Mr. Altieri.
Here.
Ms. Roberts, like, cap.
Here.
Mr. Partridge.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Ms. Chalice. Your Solicitor, Engineer, and Manager are here.
Thank you very much. We will now move into the moment of silence. And we will remember, as we enter this holiday season, all of our first responders who, when we get to spend time with our families, are out working, preserve and protect our communities. Now for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move down to the agenda. I will make a motion to, actually, I have a correction to the agenda. Under eleven point two, we will add the motion, consider approving the one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents payment to the district court. That'll be eleven point two. So that is my motion to amend the agenda. Motion was seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All those in favor to amend the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All's approved, motion carries unanimously. Now we'll make a motion, now I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Seconded by Supervisor Chanless, is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Great. Now move down to public comment for agenda items only. If you are a member of the public and you have something wish to say with regards to the agenda or any agenda items, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and let your public comment be known. What we can do is we'll, we'll do the conditional use hearing. I'll give an opportunity for public comment when the hearing is, is going on. Right? At the end of hearing, yeah, at the end of the hearing. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll move down to minutes seven point one. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the November fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting? Motion was made by Supervisor Russo, seconded by Supervisor Robert Seikap. Is there any board discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eight, Resolutions of Recognition, eight point one. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash thirty-four, recognizing those who created the All Are Welcome mural at Drexel Lodge Park, Supervisor Chanless?
Resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-four, recognizing those who created the All Are Welcome mural at Drexel Lodge Park. Whereas, the Newtown Township Parks and Recreation Board worked with the Marple Newtown School District Elementary Art Department to create a community mural at Drexel Lodge Park. And whereas, the project was a recognition of how the arts bridge community. And whereas, this mural, inspired by the collective voice of the Marple Newtown School District's elementary students, illustrates the vision of All Are Welcome, celebrating the diversity and unity of our community. And whereas, this piece embodies the unique spirit of individuality and togetherness, an artwork that includes an assemblage of thirty-five self-portraits created by students, combined with a landscape of color and pattern that is a summary of the thousands of student drawings and sentiments collected. And whereas, the mural represents the K through five artists' answers to the questions, why do you think community is important? How does being welcome to make you feel? And what kinds of images and colors express who you are? And whereas, this mural represents countless hours of work by the dedicated teachers of the Marple Newtown School District Elementary Art Department and their students, and by the Chair of the Newtown Township Parks and Recreation Board. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of the Township of Newtown does hereby extend sincere gratitude for the dedication and service to the community of all those involved in this community mural project, especially to Mrs. Kim Trigone, Loomis Elementary, Ms. Jill Bialy, Culberson Elementary, Mrs. Lisa Spratt, Russell Elementary, Mrs. Andrea, how to pronounce this, Mop, Mop, World Elementary, and all of their art students, and to Mr. Wade Pollack, Chair of Newtown Township's Parks and Recreation Board, and to its members, resolved this twentieth day of November, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? The only thing I just want to add is, and I said this at the ribbon cutting, thank you again to Wade for coordinating this with the four elementary schools and with the students. It was actually a really exciting day to see the students be able to unveil this art project that, you know, is not going to be something that's temporary. It's going to be something that's going to be there for a long time. So it was really exciting to see the, the students get excited for that. There was also an amazing collaboration between the township and the school district. And in addition to helping with that, credit also needs to go to our Director of Public Works, Mr. Sharitz, and his entire staff, who were there making sure that the facilities were open, making sure that the students had, students and teachers had the resources that they needed to conduct this project. It is a beautiful project. If you have an opportunity to go in there, it's one of many public art projects that this township has planned. So Wade's going to be pumping them out in the next couple of, next couple of years. So, thank you again, Wade. Thank you again, George. Make sure you please sell your team that. And again, thank you to the members of the Marple Newtown School District for everything. It's great. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now move down to reports, nine point one, report from the Police Department. Chief Lon, do you have anything you want to add? Thank you very much, sir.
Were you able to locate your new truck? Were you able to locate your new truck for the replacement I wanted got a hit in the accident with Captain Noel?
Yes, we have, we, at the dealership, we believe, and hopefully we deliver it this week.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Now move down to nine point two, report from the Fire Department. Chief Everloff is not here. Does anyone have any questions? That's gonna get an answer tonight. Move down to nine point three, report from the Public Works Director, Mr. Sharitz. Do you have anything to add or supplement? Nine point four, report from the building slash code officer, Mr. Rescheck. Do you have anything you want to add tonight?
Nothing to add.
Thank you very much, sir. Nine point five, report from the Finance Director. Nothing to add? Nine point six, report from the Library Director, Ms. Caruso. She's not here. Nine point seven, report from the Township Engineer, Mr. Johnson. Do you have anything you want to add or supplement?
I'll just indicate the Echo Valley Culver Replacement Project has come to successful completion, and we'll just be closing out that project shortly.
Perfect. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Seeing none, we'll move to the Township Manager, Mr. Nice.
Real quickly, there is going to be a deer hunt at Ridley Creek State Park on December first and eighth. Just letting you know that if you want to chase all your deer that way, it's probably a good thing, but no, just in case you hear a lot of gunshots, we want to make sure everybody's aware of that. As you added the one hundred and twenty-three dollar court piece, we would like to make an adjustment to our township policy for invoice payments prior to board approval. If, unless I have an objection, we'll add this to the next agenda for you to discuss further. But what we'd like to do is add that, just like we do with PICO and some of the others, when we do a court hearing, we have to make that payment at the time. And so instead of having to wait for two weeks to do it, it would allow us to go ahead and make the payment when we set up the, when we turn in the complaint. And so if you're okay with that, I'll have it on the next agenda for you to discuss further and also have the change in the policy.
Perfect.
That's the only thing I have.
Any questions for Mr. Nice?
Oh, I have one other thing, I'm sorry. Real quick, just a reminder to the public. If you're interested in serving on one of our committees, we're still looking for people to fill committees. And boards and commissions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nice. Any questions to the Township Manager? Great. Section ten, budget adjustment. Can I get a motion, ten point one, to consider approving the budget increase of six hundred dollars for the purchase of a twenty-twenty-two Ford Explorer? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts. I cap seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section eleven, payments, eleven point one. I get a motion to approve pay request number three, final payment of eight thousand, one hundred and four dollars and twenty-three cents to Eagle Contracting, Inc. For storm sewer work at Green Valley Road in the Township Building. Motion is made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Like, cap. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Eleven point two, can I get a motion approving the one hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty cent, twenty-eight cents payment to the district court? Is there any board discussion? You want to add anything to this, Mr. Nice?
No, it's, it's just to turn in a
civil complaint?
A complaint, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for the Township Manager? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section twelve, bills. I have approved, I have reviewed the bills, and I will make the motion to approve the bills on check register A dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two totaling two hundred and sixty-two thousand fifteen cents. Yeah, right, two hundred and sixty-two thousand fifteen dollars and two cents. That was my motion. Motion is made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section thirteen, developer release, thirteen point one. Can I get a motion approving the escrow release request number one for Culberson Elementary School totaling one million eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty-three dollars and the full and final amount as per the recommendation of Stantec Engineering? Motion was made by Supervisor Roberts. I cap seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. We're going to skip the hearing for right now, finish up this agenda, and then we'll come back to it. The section fifteen, new business, fifteen point one. I get a motion approving the amendment and advertisement of ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash oh-three amendment to stop sign ordinance to include Sawmill Road.
Yeah, we, we would like to have that tabled.
Table that?
Yeah, please.
That is
That's right.
Fifteen point one has been tabled. This is my question I was going to ask in a board comment there, so thank you. Fifteen point two, can I get a motion to accept the resignation of Joe Alonso as Assistant Fire Marshal effective December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two? Motion was made by Supervisor Partridge, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Like, cap. Mr. Nice, do you have anything you want to add?
Just that he's served us well for quite a few years and we'll miss him doing that.
I agree. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point three, consider approving the conditional offer of temporary employment for six months to Michael Cavolos for the part-time bookkeeping position at a rate of twenty-six dollars and forty-four cents per hour. The offer is contingent upon passing unnecessary background and credit checks. Motion was made by Supervisor Chanless, seconded by Supervisor, nope, your Supervisor Partridge. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, the only thing I would add is just to make sure that everyone's clear, this is filling the part-time bookkeeping position. This is not replacing our Finance Director. And the reason for the six months is so that the new Finance Director will have a chance to work with this person and be able to make a decision and go from there.
Perfect. All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Fifteen point four, I get a motion approving the advertisement of the following, twenty-twenty-three Board of Supervisors reorg meeting, twenty-twenty-three Municipal Authority reorg meeting, twenty-twenty-three elected auditors reorg meeting, twenty-twenty-three auditor appointment. Motion is made by Supervisor Roberts. I cap seconded by Supervisor Chanless. Is there any board discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Section sixteen, old business, sixteen point one. I get a motion to re-advertise the following additions to the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget and taking the appropriate action. Guess we'll make them, should we do a motion and then we'll, in the board discussion, let you do your presentation, Mr. Nice? How about that?
Yep. So, so what we're going to hear is that there are some items that people dealt about that.
Wait, do you want to, sorry, Ed, did you, let's make the motion first.
Yeah, okay.
So, motion was made by, are you making the motion, Ed?
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to re-advertise the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget with revenue of eleven million forty-nine thousand five dollars. Expenses of eleven million three hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and one hour. That would leave a deficit one hundred and eight thousand six dollars. Third, how is that? If, but that's
Yeah, are you making a motion?
The revenue and the expenses and the deficit.
Okay, if there's a second to that, I, I think that we just do the motion that's on the agenda, quite frankly. Is, there's no second, then that'll fail, and I'll make a motion. There is no second, so I will make a motion to re-advertise the following additions to the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget and taking the appropriate action. Is there a second? Motion was made by the Chair, seconded by Supervisor Roberts. Like, cap. Is there any board discussion? Mr. Nice, if you want to do your presentation and then we'll move into it.
Yeah, so basically, there's really just a couple of quick things. This proposed budget that you see here was what was agreed to at the last meeting. And I'm not going to go through everything on that because you've seen it multiple, multiple times. I want to jump down. The first four slides, I believe, are all additions, or maybe five slides that we had, six slides, what do I know? Seven slides. But anyway, those first slides were all the additions listed there, so you could see that, anybody can take a look. Again, here was our revenue of eleven oh four five, oh four nine, oh four five. And then what we advertised last time was the eleven two hundred and ninety-nine four thirty-eight. We would add thirty-six thousand two thirty-six. If you recall, the requirement is that if we increase any one line item more or one area category more than twenty-five percent, that's the reason why we have to re-advertise. I would make note that there were three adjustments to the budget. One was a salary adjustment of twenty-two thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. That was an amount that had been left off of the salary adjustment. It was in the, it was in the software, and it had been deducted for some reason. I, I found that we needed to add that back for the, for that. There was, we met with our insurance company. In order to get cyber insurance, we need to add about seven dollars, seven thousand dollars worth of annual cost to get that cyber insurance, and it's related to having double authentication or two authentications for getting into our software, particularly if you're coming in from the outside. And so we're, we have those in there, that's seven thousand. And then in addition to that, the Historic Commission had asked for seven thousand dollars. We had talked about five or seven thousand, and that was the amount that was there. That's the line item that is actually triggering the rea, the re-advertising. Because that one area was an increase of two hundred and thirty-three percent, and that's the reason for this. The other ones fell within the range that you could have just made the adjustment and passed the budget tonight. I would make note that in addition to that, the sheet that's attached to, the other sheet that's attached, that's not related to the budget, and I'll let, let you leave that up. I'll just talk through it. There was a list of capital projects that were, are not going to get completed in two thousand twenty-two. I would make note, there are two changes that I would like to make on that, that is, that is not there. One would be, there is a, there's an additional one hundred thousand dollars expense from Bartram Bridge. Structural, there's the structural work of one hundred and twenty-five, plus we got a grant for a hundred thousand dollars. And so there'll be, on the capital side, there'll be a hundred thousand dollar increase for the, for the revenue and a hundred thousand dollar increase for the expense. So I just wanted to make note of that. That's a, that's a wash. No big deal. If I can go back to that page where you are, just real quick, go down. Just want to make note of a couple of others. Let's just skip, go past all of the capital real quick, or all of the general fund. Keep going. Keep going. All the way down until we get to, I believe, the next one's Streetlight Fund. And this is on the website. If anybody wants to see it, I'll actually make the changes based on what we talked about tonight and have it reposted tomorrow morning, assuming that you all agree. Keep going. Great, no, keep going. Sorry, that's the department, that's not the phone. Keep going down. All right, so stop. So this is capital budget. Like I said, we'll, we'll add these to the capital budget as, if you're re-advertising in the expense, the revenue will go up a hundred thousand dollars, and then the proposed budget, will it go up the difference of what's here? So that's what that will be. Okay, go ahead, down. The Streetlight Fund, just a reminder that we were in at forty-seven thousand in revenue, and our expense is fifty thousand. And so that there is also a slight increase in taxes for those who have streetlights. And so I just wanted to, you, you had already approved that at the last meeting, but I just wanted to make sure, I don't didn't want anything, somebody say we tried to pull something, but that was something that we had already discussed at the last meeting, and that's what that is. And then the hydrant fund, there's actually a little bit of savings on. So those are the two that we have, and then everything else stayed exactly the same for all of the different.
All right, thank you, Mr. Nice. All right, now to the board discussion.
Yeah, so I'm going to mention, so for complete transparency, what we just did, to put it into words and to numbers. What we previously advertised, the budget had a deficit of two hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and twenty dollars. With the three additional expenses that Mr. Nice just described, the total thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-six. We are advertising a budget that now instead of having two hundred and fifty, four hundred and twenty, has a deficit of two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars. And that deficit is what we will have to make a decision on how we close that deficit after this budget is advertised for ten days. If it would all go to tax increase, if, if that, that were the case, then, then in fact, it would require raising the mileage to, to four point five nine percent. You know, that's if we did it with the tax increases. Other ways to, to balance the budget, but that's what we need to do. We need to balance budget ten days from now and close that deficit of two hundred and eighty-six thousand six hundred and fifty-six.
Any other comments from the board? I guess I just have a few comments. Obviously, the good thing is we have until December thirty-first to get this going, right? That's our actual drop dead statutory deadline. I think that the increases, one which was the administration salary and wages, IT communications operations, and the other one, the Historic Commission, are all in line to the vision that we have been setting forward for this township to make sure that we continue to live up to our mission statement, which is to be the preeminent township in Delaware County and Commonwealth. No one wants to see tax increases, but the beauty and the curse of this position is that we are the ones that are elected to make the tough decisions. In this economic conundrum that we find ourselves with raising, raging inflation, things continue to go up that we have some control over and other things that we have no control over. We have consistently taken a scalpel to this budget to get us down, much meat off the bone as we can do. And I think, you know, maybe, you know, who knows what can happen in the next fifteen to twenty days. Things might change theoretically, they could, they, they could not, where we, where we find the opportunity to save even more money. But, you know, we will address that when the time comes. I do have one question, though, Mr. Nice. With that advertised four point not, four point five nine percent tax increase, it is correct, I am correct that we can always, we can advertise for a higher number, but we can always, you know, up until the moment we approve it, drop that tax increase by budget carry measures, correct?
Yeah, you have, you, you can make adjustments to the budget. We, we believe that you can adjust down at any point, you know, that's, that's never an issue, but if you were to adjust up, it's always limited twenty-five percent by category and ten percent overall, and that's the reason why we're here tonight.
Understood. And if, you know, if the board and, you know, and I'm not saying this is what we're doing, but if the, if it was a four point five nine percent tax increase, the, well, let me back that up. What's the average assessed value of the homes in the township?
It's roughly about five hundred thousand.
With that four point five nine percent tax increase on the average assessed home of five hundred thousand, what, what would that be per year?
On an annual, on an annual basis, it would be an increase of thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents.
And what's that a month?
About three dollars and thirty-one cents a month.
And that three dollars and thirty-one cents includes all the improvements that we included in this budget?
That, yes, includes your, you know, your additional officer, and I could go down the whole list of all the additions that we talked about.
The two police officers, a new finance director, so and so forth.
Yeah.
Got it. All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Nice, based on the five, based on the five hundred thousand dollar assessment, what is an average tax bill right now for the township? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm having to go backwards of my numbers.
Sorry.
It's about three, about nine sixty-five.
And we are the, we are the, on the pie chart of taxes, of real estate taxes.
So if I, the, this chart that we normally show, and I think we showed it earlier, I didn't bring it this evening, but normally the, the township is roughly about ten percent of total tax base. The county is roughly about, I think it's about seventeen, eighteen percent of the tax base for most homes. And then the remainder of that ends up being the school district, which is seventy-two percent or something like that.
And mo, and the majority of the services for the residents come from this township, from their township taxes.
The, the things that most people see are from the township.
I mean, the school district pays for
Yeah, I don't want to
education of our future, of our, you know, of the future. So, I mean, that's
But this doubling, you know, the, the plowing of the streets, the picking up of the leaves, the, all of those things, the police, the paving on all of those things, that comes from us.
All the great stuff that George and his crew does. And our police force, chief. All right, thank you. Oh, and just as a note, the fire company, although we do always try to say this, we do supplement the fire department, but the fire department is volunteer, and anytime that anyone can make a donation directly to the fire company is greatly appreciated and greatly needed for the services that they provide.
All right. Any other board comment? Like I said, we can, we can always get lower, and that's hopefully what the goal is here. All those favors signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we will now move up to fourteen, public hearing. Fourteen point one, the Old Masters Conditional Use Hearing for the Municipal Authority and Possible Board Action. So I will go over a little bit of an introduction and how this process is going to work for those who are unfamiliar with the conditional use process. So we will have tonight a hearing. At the conclusion of my remarks, I'm going to turn it over to the Township Solicitor to provide background and a legal standard for this board, but also for the members of the public that are here, as well as the members of the public that might be watching this live, to make sure that everybody here is on the same page as this moves forward. The applicant, which is Newtown Township Municipal Authority, Rep. The applicant, which is Newtown Township Municipal Authority, represented by Mr. Madren, will present their case in chief. Uh, for, at the conclusion uh, uh, of each witness, we will have uh, questions by the board supervisors. Where we will be able to ask questions to the witnesses that Mr. Madren uh, calls. The party participants will then also be able to uh, ask questions to the witness. We will then have an applicant redirect. The party participants, if there are any, will be able to then provide their own case in chief. Uh, the applicant will then have the opportunity for rebuttal. Board supervisors will then go off the record, public comment will be taken, we will go back on the record, and the board supervisors will vote. With that being said, if there's anyone here who wishes to be a party protestant, I ask you, please come up to the uh, podium, state your name and address for the record.
Abby Wilson, forty-one eleven Battle Flane.
You want to be a party protestant?
I would love to be a party protestant. I have been um, intimately involved in the sewage planning process for now the better part of fourteen years. I'm very aware of the planning process, and as a result, I believe it gives me some, some right to standing, so I'm going to ask to be a party protestant, but that's up to you folks to decide, and I can appeal accordingly.
Let me ask you this question, Ms. Wilson. So I hear what you're saying, what is the legal standard that you have for standing?
As a resident of the township, and because we are talking about going into steep and very steep slopes, which absolutely affects every member of this township. I believe every township resident has legal standing here. Um, I also believe that um, a, as a uh, as, as people that have been involved in the community, and certainly I think that I have been that involved in the community as it relates to both environmental issues, and certainly sewage planning issues. Um, I think, you know, I, I believe that gives me legal standing. Because I do think this is an overall issue, not just related to one particular neighborhood, one particular individual.
So um, I will, that is not the legal standard for standing. I'm going to turn it over to our solicitor if he wants to add anything from a legal perspective, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant to, to see what their position is on the standing.
Yeah, I mean, legal standing is if you have a particular interest in the matter before the board at this time, where you've been impacted more than just a member of the general community at large. Uh, so, you know, an adjacent landowner or somebody who's close enough to be impacted by the disturbance of steep slopes, uh, is there an objection?
Yeah, um, yeah, we, we will object to this. I, you know, to be a, to have a party status in a zoning matter, you have to have a substantial direct and immediate interest. Um, the case law says what those things are, they're not a general interest that, you know, every member in the community uh, cares about the environment, cares about steep slopes and is impacted and that sort of thing. That's not, that doesn't give you party status. Um, so, uh, we object to that.
So um, from a procedural standpoint, do we now take a vote on whether we grant standing or not?
No, you're the chairman, you can just, well, I guess you could, just do a, uh, rule as the chairman, and I guess the board should vote, like, yeah, typical, you just control the evidence.
So I will make a motion, Ms. Wilson, that you do not have standing based off of the um, analysis that was provided by the township solicitor, as well as the um, applicant's uh, attorney uh, in his rebuttal, or in his objection, I should say.
Okay.
Is there a, uh, so I'll make that motion, seconded by supervisor Partridge. All those in favor to uh, deny standing to Ms. Wilson signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, and you do realize that is an appealable issue.
You, you don't have to get good.
Thank you very much.
Anybody?
Yep, looks like we have another one.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Bob Rafferty, forty-seven hundred West Chester Pike. I am the adjacent landowner to the public matters to be discussed tonight.
Perfect. Um, Mr. Rafferty, quick question. Um. I know that the property is in a trust. Are you one of the trustees?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Alright, um, I don't have it.
No, no objection. Would, would notices be mailed to, to forty-seven hundred West Chester Pike? Is that where you?
That's fine, yes.
And addressed to you?
Please.
There was no objection from the applicant, so party status has been granted to you, Mr. Rafferty. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Secor, if you want to tee it up for us a little bit?
Right, so uh, Newtown Township has a steep slope ordinance, which is incorporated into our zoning code. Uh, so if you were going to disturb or encroach upon steep slopes in connection with construction or other um, activities, they're regulated, and so you have to come before the board. There's limits on how much you can disturb, um, and what, you have to come for what they call, unless it's just by right, you have to get what they call conditional use approval, which is, anybody familiar with zoning, it's like a special exception, which means it's a use that is permitted, but there's particular criteria that are applied uh, that the board can view to make sure that the application whose um, uh, proposed activities meet those criteria, such as is the public health, safety, or welfare going to be harmed by this, uh, you know, is inconsistent with the zoning or inconsistent with uh, other regulations? Uh, there's a whole slew of criteria that uh, we consider, uh, they're set forth in the code at section one seventy-two dash eighty-nine, seventy-two dash thirteen, uh, and um, it, it's that the applicant has to come in and demonstrate why, in this particular instance, uh, they're entitled to additional use approval. So this has to do with a uh, access drive, essentially a driveway, to be able to access a pump station related to our sewage plan throughout the township. Uh, that it's been referred to as the old Masters Pump Station. Uh, you have to be able to access it to maintain it, I think. And you'll hear evidence as to how often it has to be accessed. Uh, we, our uh, code allows um, utility easements by right, so you could run electric through steep and very steep slopes. Uh, you can run sewage through steep and very steep slopes, but access drives are listed as conditional use approval. Uh, the question becomes, is this a, you, would this be considered a, a utility easement since it's for, solely for the access of a utility? Um, but the township administration said come in for conditional use approval as under the provision of access driveway, because that's specifically what the code says. Um, it crosses three properties. Uh, the, what is formerly known as the Old Masters Golf Course property, um, the uh, Downs Valley View Golf Course, uh, the Rafferty, a portion of that Rafferty property that's owned by the trust, and a portion of Aqua, uh, Aqua's property. Um, originally, so the, there's, there's three separate applications. There's one plan, you know, like a plan set that depicts in, in a sketch and diagram form what it is that the applicant seeking to do, that covers all of those properties. That entire plan was presented to the planning commission, which gave her favorable recommendation. Uh, at the time, the um, the only application that was specifically referenced on our website was, because there's three separate applications, the one that had a the Claude D. Baton related entity, uh, the Claude D. Baton related entity, the old value, the old, old Masters Golf Course. Uh, but the plan that was considered applied to all three properties, so we had this scheduled for a hearing a couple weeks ago. Uh, the, what was on the internet was not, didn't have all three properties on there, all three applications. So we re-advertised, uh, we republished for, for this evening, uh, twice in two consecutive weeks in the Daily Times, and the properties actually posted with that notice for each specific property. And um, you know, we have uh, you know, proof publication, which will mark as township one, we have uh, the postings, which will mark as number two, township number two. Uh, so what the traditional will happen then is we're going to turn it over to the applicant, who will present their case as to why they believe they're entitled to conditional use approval, and then the party protester will get a chance to ask questions.
Perfect. Mr. Madren, is your case?
Thank you. Uh, my name's Mike Madren. I am an attorney here in Delaware County. I'm the solicitor in Newtown Township, Delaware County Municipal Authority. Um, the only witness I'm going to have this evening is Dave Porter, um, who's the authority engineer. Uh, I have one exhibit that's in addition to uh, everything that we submitted, and you have linked on your website, and that's Dave's resume. Um, because we're going to ask that he be treated as an expert. Um, have a copy here with me. Uh, you want this to the court reporter or to you, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I can put one together. Usually I need a copy because if somebody feels that I gotta do a return of record.
What do you want to mark that says Mike?
Um, I guess it would be applicant one if everything else is going to be joint exhibits.
Yeah, I was gonna, yeah. Township exhibits were the um, uh, proof publication, township one, township two is the four postings, because Aqua actually has two frontages, one on Gradyville Road, one on West Chester Pike, and then the Subaru property. And then township exhibit three is a collection of four lists, which are the uh, actual properties that received written notices pursuant to uh, zoning code uh, about this hearing. Uh, so that's township one, two, three. You can start with applicant one.
We'll use, we'll make the uh, resume applicant one. Um, I'm sorry, Rich, did you list the planning commission minutes as an exhibit?
Not, you can't.
Okay, so, planning commission minutes to be applicant two. Um, Old Masters Pump. Can't reach, I'm sorry. Old Masters Pump Station, uh, Delta Construction, this uh, Conservation District info will be applicant three. Old Masters Pump Station Tree View, applicant four, Old Masters Pump Station, application, applicant five, additional use review letter, applicant six, bike plan, applicant seven. Um, if we could keep applicant seven up, I think that's probably going to be the one we're referring to.
Perfect. Um, and with regards to Mr. Porter being recognized as an engineer, he has testified before this board uh, in numerous capacities. I don't have any objection to him being admitted as an, as an expert. Is there any objection from the board? Seeing none, he's admitted as an expert.
Alright, thank you. Um. Just want to give you a brief overview, uh, because there's probably going to be um, a couple things there, sort of peripheral to your conditional use criteria that, that we need to discuss this evening. Um. The first is uh, the route that this takes. Um, we have obtained easements from uh, Old Masters and from Aqua. Um, we condemned an easement across the Rafferty Subaru property. Um, that has been uh, a final order that issued by the Court of Common Pleas. Um, the uh, Rafferty uh, Trust applied for a stay before the Commonwealth Court, that stay was denied. Um, arguments been held before the Commonwealth Court. So um, the denial of the stay gives us the right to, to proceed. Um, we've paid our uh, just compensation into court, and we have also submitted a bond, although I will say that a part of the appeal is a contest of bond, I'm not sure why, because uh, you know, Commonwealth recognizes bonds from municipal authorities, but there we go. Um, so we have um, rights in a particular path across these properties to our pump station on the Old Masters uh, property. Um, there was consideration given to a different route that would have gone through the Old Masters property, almost along for the Florida Park development and back around, also impactful to steep slopes. So I, you know, regardless of what else you might hear, here, steep slopes were going to be impacted one way or another. It's, it's not feasible to not impact steep slopes. Could we have moved this thing a foot one way or a foot the other way? Is that feasible? Sure, it's not feasible to not impact steep slopes and get to this pump station. That's important because feasibility is an element of your conditional reuse criteria. Um, and regardless, this is the route we have. Um, now, the authority made a business decision to go this route because it obtained easements without consideration from um, Aqua and uh, the owner of the Old Masters property. Uh, so what you'll probably hear, I anticipate during public comment as well, you know, when they did the five thirty-seven plan, they were going to go all through Old Masters and a couple things came up. One is Mr. De, De Baton submitted a development plan for that property that would have been significantly impacted and um, did not agree to give us that route any longer. Um, which means we would have had to do a condemnation that probably would have been a total taking of that property, when you really look at us going all the way across the front of the property and around. Um, second is the, the residents of Florida Park weren't thrilled about this access driveway going right next to their yards as well. Um, so that's why uh, this route was chosen. Um, we have the rights now, and uh, we think it's the only feasible route at this. Um, with that, I do want to put on the record just a, a thought that we don't really need conditional use approval here. Um, I think I need to preserve this for the purpose of the record. And that falls under one thirty-four dash three of your steep slope conservation district uh, ordinance. That says no person shall use or alter any land, and the word land is important there. It doesn't say tract, it doesn't say lot, it doesn't say parcel. Um, tract and lot being defined terms within your code, uh, parcel being a commonly defined term, it says land. Um, no person shall use or alter any land in a steep slope conservation district if the intended use or alteration requires approval as a subdivision. This does not. Or land development, conditional use, this does not. Okay, so we're not subdividing anything, we're not going through land development here, we're putting in a driveway. Or is a special use under chapter one forty-eight, which is your subdivision land development ordinance and chapter one seventy-two zoning, without first applying for approval under this chapter. After being so approved, no land, again, not tract, not lot, no land. Within a steep slope conservation district, shall be used without compliance with such approval and other applicable regulations. A land affected here has not been um, through steep slope approval before. Okay, so this land, um, we don't think really needs this approval. Nonetheless, we're here, we're going to put on our case, but we want to preserve that argument in case we need it down the road. Um, so the pertinent sections of your code, one thirty-four dash seven uh, A to E, which says a rotor ax, this is, that's very steep slopes, a rotor access driveway um, is permitted as conditional use to provide access to a permitted use. Um, we already have a pump station there, it's a utility, it's permitted use under the code. Um, if the board of supervisors determines that no alternative alignment or location is feasible, we already discussed the feasibility of an alternative alignment. Um, that same section, subsection B F, same exact language, rotor access driveways to provide access to permitted use if the board of supervisors determines no alternative alignment or, or location is feasible, so. Um, you guys have a lot of criteria we need to walk through. So Dave's going to walk us through it. Um, beginning, if anyone has a code and wants to follow along, we're going to walk through um, one thirty-four dash one, which is your purpose section. And um, your uh, conditional use criteria within the steep slope conservation district says that um, it has to be, I, I used, it's consistent with the purpose. I would argue that uh, since you permit it, it's consistent with the purpose, but um, here we go. Um, to the, uh, are we, to the extent possible, um, conserving and protecting slopes from har, harmful land disturbance such as excessive grading, land form alteration, and extensive vegetation?
Yes.
Remove it. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh my God, yes. So the answer to one thirty-four dash one A, uh, is yes.
And they say it's all in your opinion as a professional engineer.
Right.
Um, are we avoiding petitional ha, potential hazards to property and the destruction of the ecological balance, which may be caused by increased runoff, flooding, soil erosion, sedimentation, blasting and ripping of rock, landslide, and soil failure?
Yes.
Um, and, and I, just while we're here, we've obtained a NFTs permit, right? National Pollution Discharge, Erosion and Sedimentation Control Current.
That is correct.
And what, if, if excessive erosion occurs, what does that permit require?
That permit requires the applicant, in this case, the uh, municipal authority and their contractors to uh, stabilize any erosion uh, immediately and to comply with the provisions in that permit and on the permit plans.
Okay. Um, is this designed in a way to um, uh, is this designed, is this access driveway designed in a way um, to be compatible with other use, uses that would preserve and protect natural resources, so it's I'll put it in the, yeah, stereo here. Um. Is this use compatible with the development of slope areas in a way that avoids accelerated erosion? Is this use compatible with the development of slope areas in a way that avoids accelerated erosion, soil failure, accelerated seepage? And other conditions which may create a danger to life or property?
Yes.
Um, is this use designed in a way to promote um, to the extent possible with the development? Ecological balance among the natural system of elements such as wildlife, vegetation, aquatic life? That could be adversely affected by inappropriate development of slopes.
Yes.
Um, will this development cause excessive erosion? And as a result, the reduction in water carrying capacity of the water courses which flow through around the township? With the consequences of increasing flood crests and flood hazards within the township.
No.
Thank you for listening so closely. Um, have we designed this in a way to protect adjacent landowners in the township and or other municipalities? From par- possible harmful effects of inappropriate grading and development of the steep slope areas? Um, and while we're here, in your prefer- opinion as a professional engineer, is this? Driveway designed in a way to safely carry vehicles to and from the pump station?
Yes.
Um, is this driveway designed in a way that will protect individuals who choose despite any apparent dangers to occupy land within the slopes?
Yes.
Um, does this uh, design promote the provision of safe and reliable accessways? Parking areas, utility systems, serving development on or around this deep slope area? Or more sensitive grading and siding might be essential?
Yes.
Proposed use or such or structure in uh, your opinion as the person who designed it? Designed in such a way that um, any footings, if any, are designed to extend to stable soil and or bedrock?
Yes.
And are there any footings?
There are not.
Um, is there any on lot sewage disposal facilities in the driveway area?
There is not.
Um. Is it designed in such a way that the proposed non-agricultural displacement of soil? Will be undertaken only for purposes consistent with the goals and objectives of the chapter? And execute in a manner that won't cause excessive erosion or create unstable conditions?
Yes, it is, and that is consistent with our NPDS permit.
Um, will surface water runoff, surface runoff of water create any unstable conditions, including erosion?
No.
Um, will stormwater drainage facilities be used in this design?
No.
Um, we just, we, I discussed in my opening, um, the alternative location, the feasibility of a lot of alternative location. Did you hear that discussion?
Yes.
And do you agree with uh, the statements I made?
Yeah.
Regarding feasibility? Um, will earth moving activities and vegetation removal be conducted only to the extent necessary to accommodate the use? And in a manner that shall limit as far as practical surface runoff erosion sediment or sedimentation or unstable soil conditions?
Yes.
And will uh, in the course of construction, any um? Reasonable mitigation techniques and procedures be utilized to prevent runoff and sedimentation?
Yes.
Okay. Does this use presidential prejudicial to the character of the immediate vicinity? Um, and will it have, let's not do a compound question, let's do that. Pred- is it prejudicial to the character of the immediate vicinity?
It is not.
Will have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties?
No.
Is is the use suitable for the area in question?
Yes.
The designed, uh, will it be constructed, will it be operated and maintained to be in harmony? With an appropriate in appearance with the existing or intended character of the immediate vicinity?
Yes.
Uh. To the extent necessary, will we be providing water, sewage and stormwater drainage uh, protection?
Uh, water and sewer are not necessary for the driveway, uh, stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control have been. Um, provided for in our NPDS permit.
And to the extent necessary, will it be accessible for fire and police protection?
Yes.
Is this use physically suitable for the site?
Yes.
Are there any topographical, soil, geological drainage or environmental feature? Which would cause the property or would cause the use to adversely affect the health, safety and welfare of the neighboring properties or township?
There are not.
Is used consistent with the um, especially when you consider it on a whole with the project, it's part of the uh, planning. The township's comprehensive plan. The townships. Let me try it over again, cuz I I I stumped, I fumbled it a little bit. Um, is the use consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Will there be any increased traffic congestion as a result of this use?
There will not.
Will be, there be increased danger of fire or panic or otherwise endangerment to public safety?
No.
Um, will the use overcrowd the land or cause undue congestion of population?
No.
Once again, will the use impair stormwater management or cause soil erosion?
It will not.
Will the use impair the adequate supply of light and air or to adjacent property?
It will not.
Will the use be consistent with the character of the surrounding area?
Yes.
Will the yes, use be detrimental to other properties in the area?
It will not.
Will the use affect the character of the immediate neighborhood by failing to conserve the values of existing buildings and to encourage? And to discourage, I guess, the most. Let me do that in two parts. Will the use affect the character of the immediate neighborhood by failing to conserve values of existing uses?
It will not.
Will the use encourage the most appropriate use of the land?
Yes.
Will the use adversely affect the community development objectives uh, set forth in the zoning code?
It will not.
Will the use adversely affect off-street parking?
It will not.
Will the use substantially burden water, sewer, groundwater, schools, parks or other public facilities?
It will not.
Will the use otherwise adversely affect the health, safety and moral or public well morals or public welfare?
It will not.
Oh, one more time, will the use uh, have a detrimental effect on health, safety, uh, comfort, convenience, morals or general welfare of the public? And in particular, will it affect those things for the residents of the immediate vicinity?
It will not.
In fact, the residents of the immediate vicinity, uh, particularly in Florida Park desperately need this use, don't they?
That is correct.
Um, and when we sit at our meetings, people from the immediate vicinity come to the meetings and say, when are you gonna be done with this, don't they?
That is correct.
Um, and they have failing sewer system or septic systems in that area, don't they? Failing septic systems.
That is correct.
Um. Will the proposed use um, equipments and materials used therefore be readily accessible to fire and police protection?
Yes.
Uh, will the use be uh, of such dimension, location or character as to be consistent with the comprehensive plan?
Yes.
Will the use increase traffic? Include traffic accessways which are adequate to provide safe ingress and egress to and from public streets for those using it?
It will.
Will the uh, proposed use make adequate provisions for safe and efficient? pedestrian and vehicle vehicular traffic use?
Yes.
Will the proposed use uh, be adequately drained without adversely affecting adjoining properties?
Yes.
Will uh, the slopes and grade on site be protected against erosion?
They will.
Uh, will the proposed use unduly interfere with or adversely affect natural resources? And I'm gonna go through a list here, such as streams, lakes, swamps, springs, wetlands, woodlands, slopes and grades. Wildlife habitats and trees over eight inches in diameter, measured three feet above the base of the trunk. Which are located in the in in the area of the.
They will not.
Whether the uh, I'm sorry, will the proposed use diminish the value of properties adjacent to or in the vicinity?
Will not.
Will the proposed use uh, be physically suited to the site? Uh, from a topographical soil hydro geological, hydro geological and environmental characteristics? Let me try this, yes. Um, will the proposed use cause an unreasonable and substantial interference with the use and enjoyment of properties in the vicinity?
No.
Uh, will the proposed use be compatible with the exist- existing uses in the immediate vicinity?
Yes.
Uh, will the proposed conditional use result in an unreasonable density of population or overcrowding of the land?
No.
Will the proposed use deprive adjacent properties of adequate light and air?
They will not.
Will the proposed use substantially burden sewage facilities, schools, parks, utilities and other public services?
They will not.
Well, uh, assuming that there's approval this evening, will the proposed use comply with the zoning article? And the land development standards? Uh. Since we don't need land development.
Uh, yeah, I mean, it it's not a land development.
Right, so it's compliant.
Compliant.
All right, one more time. Two more times probably, the will the proposed use have a detrimental effect on health, safety, comfort, convenience, morals, the general welfare of the public?
Will not.
Uh, will all structures thereon be readily accessible to police and fire protection?
Yes.
Uh, will the proposed use be of a dimension, location and character as to be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood?
Yes.
Will the proposed use uh, create an increase in traffic? In in a way that dangers endangers the health, safety and welfare of the community?
It will not.
Uh, will the proposed use unduly interfere with natural resources?
It will not.
Uh, will the proposed use involve the storage or display outside of any building of any merchandise goods? Products, articles or equipment?
It will not.
Will the proposed use involve the display inside the building of? Building uh, um, inside a building of merchandise goods, products, articles or equipment? Uh, that will be visible from outside the building or outside the property lines?
Will not.
Will the proposed use cause a substantial decrease in the value of properties in the vicinity?
It will not.
And uh, do you believe the proposed use will uh, result in an increase in property values in the vicinity?
My professional opinion that we've seen with other public sanitary sewer projects where we've extended public sewer. Property values have increased.
Um. Is the proposed use located in the way um? To unduly burden the topography, hydra- hydrogeology, soil or other features of the land?
Is not.
Um, will the proposed use create an unreasonable and substantial interference with the enjoyment of properties in the vicinity? Of the proposed?
It will not.
Now, um. You heard earlier that Mr. Rafferty uh, became a party uh, protester in this matter, correct?
Yes, sure. Just, I wanted to make sure everybody's oriented. We just asked the witness, what it is we're talking about like now?
Yeah, let's get there. I I thought we had to plan out, I apologize.
Yeah, let's just make this like.
Plan out, please.
I guess the three things that I'm thinking that are gonna be important to the most important, I mean, I understand all these are, but what it is? How it impacts anybody and what were the alternatives that you considered and why they're not feasible?
Right.
And then, and then go right back to what you were doing, but I think context will help.
Okay, so um, do you recognize exhibit seven?
Yes.
And what is that?
That is a plan, overall plan of uh, steep and very steep slopes. On the three subject properties.
And uh, along the left side, um, do you see the easement area outlined?
I do.
Um, do you mind going up and pointing to one of the screens so that the board can see the easement area?
Just remember, as you're doing that, Tom's gonna be trying to take down as much, so try to be as descriptive as you can there, Mr. Porter.
Absolutely. So along the westerly side of what is now known as the Valley View Golf property, formerly Old Masters. There is a sanitary sewer easement that is twenty feet wide. It runs from the existing access driveway to Old Masters. In a southerly direction. It traverses some very steep and steep slopes. Um, I think I mentioned the easement is twenty feet wide, the driveway itself is proposed at ten feet wide. So as we move to the south, it again crosses a very steep slope. It approaches the property boundary between the Old Masters property and the Rafferty Subaru property. And the permanent access driveway and permanent easement extend across. The Rafferty Subaru property at the very top of the steep and very steep slopes. Minimizing impacts of those uh, natural resources at that point. It then proceeds beyond the Rafferty property, back onto the Valley View Golf property. Through very steep and steep slopes. It crosses the existing sanitary sewer easement. It then proceeds south through the Valley View Golf property adjacent to. Um, one of their fairways and greens along the southwestern portion of the property. Uh, there are very little steep and very steep slopes through that portion of the property. The driveway in in that location is situated outside of wetlands, it's outside of any floodplain area. Uh, it then proceeds south off of the Valley View Golf property. Onto the formerly Philadelphia Suburban Water Company, now Aqua property. And extends in a south, southeastern direction. Back onto the Valley View Golf property and connects with the existing sanitary sewer pump station. The driveway in total length is about eighteen hundred feet. The, the previous alternative route that was described by Mr. Madron. Um, would have come off of the existing driveway at the driving range. Of the Valley View Golf property. And would have extended along the easterly side of the Valley View Golf property. It would have traversed some uh, steep slopes, some very steep slopes in the southern portion of that property. And then uh, traversed across uh, some of the fairways. Along the southern portion of the Valley View Golf property, ultimately ending at the existing Old Masters Pump Station. That driveway was contemplated to be approximately eighteen hundred sixty feet. So the, the current location is about sixty feet shorter.
Dave, Dave, can I interrupt you for just a second? That driveway was contemplated to be eighteen hundred sixty feet coming off of the parking area, right?
Correct.
Assuming that we didn't get an easement to use the area from Westchester Pike to the parking area. That driveway would have been significantly longer, correct?
Yes, correct. Um, probably somewhere around five or six hundred more feet. Um. So, although the new length of the driveway is only about three percent shorter. The width of the driveway is proposed at ten feet, the former location had it at twelve feet wide. So by reducing the width of the driveway, we reduce the impervious coverage by twenty percent compared to the former location. So effectively lowering the impact of straight line management uh, at the new location.
This A, the drive.
The driveway is proposed to be constructed of asphalt buildings, which is sort of a gravel driveway. Um, at ten feet wide, eight inches thick placed. Um, in areas where it may be a little bit softer. Uh, particularly near the floodplain area, we've contemplated adding some ballast stone below the driveway. To allow for structural stability because of the uh, weight of some of the vehicles anticipated to access the pump station. Okay, thank you.
Great, that, that, a couple more questions for you, Dave, but you may wanna be uh, closer to the plan. Um. There is a. I, temporary easement as well, um, that would go around the Rafferty properties, is that correct?
That is correct, that temporary easement is shown in this location that extends from. The permanent driveway along the easterly property. the easterly property line of Rafferty. It extends in a southeastern direction to the corner of their property. Uh, and then extends in a ninety degree angle to the southwest. And then connects back to the, uh, permanent, uh, driveway.
And, um, to follow that route is more impactful on steep slopes, correct?
That is correct.
I mean, can you explain as best as you could summarily why?
To extend the driveway through the temporary easement um, with the limited width of the easement, we would have an, a significant more encroachment out to tie into the proposed or into the existing grades when we grade the driveway through there. So the driveway as proposed is at twelve percent. So going through the very steep and steep slopes creates more grading beyond the extent of where the driveway needs to go to maintain that twelve percent grade on the driveway.
Okay, now, when we were, uh, before the planning commission, you heard some concern from some members of the public that, well, a member of the public that um, when the five thirty-seven plan was submitted to DEP, the original layout of the driveway was part of the plan, is that correct?
That was the comment that was received that was not correct. The Act five thirty-seven plan did not contemplate specific access to the pump station. Simply that the pump station would be situated in the southerly portion of the Old Masters property.
And that's because, uh, access is a local land development issue, correct? Not a DEP environmental concern.
Yes, the access is a design component, uh, not a planning component.
Um. And during the course of, um, considering putting the driveway along the Florida Park side, um, were any comments received from neighbors in Florida Park?
Yes, some of the neighbors adjacent to where the easterly property boundary, uh, is situated. Um. Had concern with the close proximity of the proposed driveway, in particular being right up against their backyard. Uh, some of the other concerns were losing some trees along that property line as well as, um, and this is more of a concern with the proposed development as a whole, vehicle parking along that property.
And, uh, in your opinion, was it feasible for the authority to, uh, uh, design this access easement and obtain the rights to install it without impacting steep slopes? Or very steep slopes?
No.
I don't have anything further.
Could I, could I just ask something? Is there any access easement? A permanent access easement to this pump station now anywhere?
Other than what is depicted on this plan, no.
Meaning that what you're requesting approval to do tonight?
Correct.
Meaning there's no other route?
No other.
You don't own it, you don't own an easement through the Old Masters property to get?
Not for access, no.
But Dave, since, since we're still going, and I'm sure the, the board has some familiarity, so you don't have to go into too much detail, but can you just describe the impact to the township that connecting and operating this um, pump station will have as far as the provision of, uh, sewer service?
Certainly. The Old Masters Pump Station will serve approximately two hundred and five EDUs or units of connection within the Florida Park neighborhood uh, along a portion of Westchester Pike from basically Mostardi's landscaping out to the intersection of Boot Road uh, and the northern portion of Campus Boulevard. Uh, in addition, on the north side of Westchester Pike is the Marville Development, which is largely undeveloped at this point. And beyond that is Phillips Lane, which will also be serviced by the Old Masters Pump Station. Um. Within Florida Park, there's a significant number of failing on lot systems. In fact, as Mr. Madron had indicated, the last authority meeting, there was a resident that came in that was asking about timing for startup of the pump station. She has been on a holding tank for two years. Um, it's cost her a couple hundred dollars every pump out, and she's pumping, I believe, every three weeks. There's another resident that has a failing on lot system that has to pump for septic tank because the drain field doesn't properly dispose of the sewage. Um. There is a vacant lot that was subject of, I believe, is, a zoning variance. And they have a grading permit application in to develop a lot, but they can't get uh, sanitary sewer approval because the pump station is not active. So, and that's similar to another property on, uh, Phillips Lane. That developer came in approximately three years ago and asked uh, about timing for, uh, connection, and they could not get sewage planning approval because the pump station wasn't ready. Yes, sir. Is the car dealership on this pump? Yes. So the Subaru dealer is on this pump station, and he's currently on a septic system because the pump station is not active. I believe he's currently on a pumping hall. The septic system is no longer in use. Okay, thank you.
Dave, the, um, portion of the easement that crosses the Rafferty property is all in building setbacks, correct?
That is correct.
And, um, at one point, Mr. Rafferty asked to, um, excavate additional steep slopes to put, um, his retaining wall further back closer to this, and the, and the township denied that, is that correct?
Uh, I don't recall.
Okay.
What, what action the township took on it?
Um, would that have required, uh, more excavation of the steep slopes than putting a driveway in?
Yes. That's all.
No more questions, Mr. Madron? Okay. Um, Mr. Rafferty, since you are a party protesting, you have the ability to question Mr. Porter. I want to highlight that word, question, Mr. Porter. Um, you know, it's, it's just that, you know, we're not going to get into anything other than just questions. Um, and we'll monitor them as they kind of go on.
Okay, uh, fine.
You just mentioned your microphone is on, correct?
A green light's on, yes. Is that better? Okay. Um. I guess a couple of questions is, um, Mr. Porter referenced several times that there would be no, um, negative effect to a neighboring property. He answered yes and no to several, several questions. As a board, you?
So real quick, it's the questions to Mr. Porter. Yep. And, and it can only be questions to what he's testified thus far to.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Porter, can I ask what gives you uh, in your professional opinion to speak about the property values and potential negative effects on property values as an engineer?
Um, I'm not sure I understand. There, it seemed to be a couple of questions in there, Mr. Rafferty, can you?
Okay, you, you, you testified that there would be no negative property value through neighboring properties. My question is, what as an engineer gives you the professional, um, credibility as a, uh, appraiser?
I, I, I'm object to it, that question's phrased.
Your, what's the basis of the objection?
Well, right. You don't have to be an appraiser necessarily to have a, have an opinion about what.
I'm asking him what, as an engineer?
Hold on, real quick. He's got to tell us what the basis of his objection is, and we'll say whether we grant it or sustain it, or I mean, object, uh, yeah, overrule it or sustain it.
That's what.
So I'm sorry, I didn't hear what your, what your answer was.
Well, the question was, uh, what in your experience as an engineer gives you the ability to testify as an appraiser as to property values? And, uh, I don't think that we ever said Mr. Porter was testifying as an appraiser. He's testifying to his opinion as a professional engineer. The weight of that opinion is a decision for the board.
Okay. So I'm going to sustain the objection, so you move to your next question.
Okay. Uh, Dave, you mentioned, um, when you walked through the plot plan, um, some potential wetlands on the southern side of the property. And if you're not familiar with it, it's, and I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with the cop course, it would be down behind hole number seven, I believe. Which I have walked a property. And you are getting extremely, extremely close to what I, I mean, you're getting very low in that area. Would you comment on potential interruption of, or how close you might be to potential wetlands?
So I think the question was, how close is the driveway to wetlands?
Yes.
Um, I do not have it off the top of my head. I know that we had a wetlands biologist, professional wetlands biologist that's employed by our company, Christopher Mulby. And there's a certification to that effect on the plans um, documenting where the wetlands are located. They were picked up by physical survey, added to the plans. And those plans were submitted to, uh, both the township and to the Delaware County Conservation District for the NPD, for the grading permit and for the NPDS permit, uh, review and approval. Um, I can tell you that the driveway is not approaching to the steep slopes. I just don't know dimension wise what the separation distance is.
You know, wetlands.
Oh, I'm sorry, from the, from the wetlands, correct?
Um, I'll have a question, follow-up question later for the board concerning that same question. That's okay.
Well, you can do a public comment to us.
Public comment. Um, Dave, you also mentioned or testified that on the proposed temporary road that would stay on, and it is currently on the Deeperton property that comes up the slope and steep slope and then hangs a ninety degree angle back to me at the corner of my property in Deeperton, yes, right there. Um, you mentioned, um, that it would have interfered or you would have had disturb more area, how much more?
I don't know the answer to that.
Could you provide that information to the board so they can make an intelligent decision?
Objection.
So you don't know the answer to that question? As a, as the, as the engineer who put this plan together?
So.
At, at this point in time, I don't have the answer to the square footage uh, as far as the amount of very steep slope and steep slope disturbance within the proposed temporary easement. And the temporary easement was largely for extension of the electrical line and not for a proposed driveway. The electrical was to be run through a temporary easement while the litigation was going through the condemnation proceedings in order to get the pump station, um, started up for testing to allow folks to, to tie in. The issue with access um, precluded that from occurring, um, before um, we submitted for a conditional use for the driveway and for the electric line.
Dave, you also mentioned, um, in your testimony about interruption or disturbing of trees. Could you, could you review what you said about that as far as the size and width of certain trees?
I don't believe I said anything about the size or width of any trees.
There's a criteria about the width.
Did you replay, could you help him out there because?
No.
Somebody could pull up his testimony, please?
So we don't have the ability to read back that, right?
So I'm the, I'm the, I'm the only one that heard him mention it?
So, again, you're not asking me questions. Um, what I will tell you is you can rephrase the question if you want. Uh, to where Mr. Porter can answer it, but it doesn't sound like you did ask it and you did answer it. I don't know if you want to rephrase it.
Did you make comments and reference to trees that would disturb and size or a number of those trees?
I don't recall making a comment to the size or a number of trees that were disturbed at this here.
Could you remind me what you comment? Maybe I can rephrase the question, so maybe you can answer it.
I, objections.
I was waiting for it.
Yes, I, I, I.
Okay.
There's a question.
Uh, it was about trees. There was a question.
Said he doesn't remember, and then you said, well, can you remember? So then he said, no, I don't remember. And then you said again, can you remember?
Understood. So let's remember a couple of things. We have one synographer here. We can't talk over each other. Everyone will be able to say what they need to say or ask what they need to ask.
Sure.
So, Mr. Rafferty, you still have the floor?
Um, Dave, also in section one thirty-four-one, as far as purpose, um, the attorney went through a list of A through K uh, of the zoning, uh, code. And you were very quick to answer yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. And some of them had to do with runoff. Um, negative effect of property values. Uh. Permit only used for compatible with development of slope areas in section E. What, what is your plan to protect my neighboring property from runoff in this slope and steep slope interruption?
Our plan is to comply with the NPDS permit that was granted by the Delaware County Conservation District. And also the grade permit granted by the township.
So as far as stormwater management, there are no plans for this road or any stormwater management?
The plans for stormwater management are included with the NPDS permit.
But you testified that there's no storm drains being put in on the road or in that area, correct?
That is correct.
So there's no plans for stormwater runoff?
That is incorrect.
What am I missing?
You gotta ask a question.
My question is, how, how can you have a plan that protects stormwater management with no, nothing to gather the water? To, to, to obtain the water, collect the water? When I was in, nevermind. I'll let you answer that question.
I believe I already answered the question. Stormwater management, erosion incentive control are provided in our NPDS permit.
Okay, I'm going to, uh, I have no further questions for this witness, I will have some comments and public comment.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rafferty. Okay, questions from the board for Mr. Uh, for Mr. Porter here? Anyone from the board?
So this, this road that cuts across the I guess the corner of his property is behind a retaining wall in a setback area, correct? That is correct. So he could never build on this anyway. This does not affect his, any of his coverage. This is strictly perception, correct? As far as it doesn't affect his buildability on the site, it doesn't affect his use of the site because he cannot use that anyway. Anything is just in a setback, correct? That is correct. Thank you.
Um, can you, Mr. Porter, just flesh out, just so it's clear? Um, the, very briefly, the, um, compliance with the NPDS permit and how that is, is answering the question that, that we were, and Mr. Rafferty was trying to get to essentially?
Sure. Without getting into too many technical details.
Yeah.
The stormwater management is required through the NPDS permitting process to infiltrate the difference in the two-year runoff volume from pre to post-development. Uh, so through a combination of reducing the overall impervious coverage by the previous location of the proposed driveway, which was to be pervious pavement. Um, there's a certain runoff factor that goes into how much volume would run off of that driveway. Comparing that with the length and area of impervious coverage for the new driveway and how much runoff would be anticipated from that. Um, there is already a s- stormwater management basin that's been constructed as part of the pump station and the parking area at the pump station to account for that volume of runoff because it's in the same watershed, it's tributary to the same receiving waters. Um. The permit was issued on that basis. Uh, furthermore, the driveway as it's proposed with asphalt millings is not a hundred percent impervious, so to some degree, some of that stormwater. So to some degree, some of that stormwater runoff will be allowed to infiltrate into the ground. Um, the driveway is graded into the slope so that anything that runs off the driveway would run toward the slope away from the Rafferty property um instead of running off of the driveway down the slope.
I'm sorry, I was going to cut you off.
That, I'm finished.
You're done? Okay. Um, and with regards to, so that those who are listening understand, Delaware County Conservation District. They are responsible for uh overseeing and implementing essentially the Clean Water Act, the Clean Streams Law, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so sent from an environmental perspective, the agency that oversees the environmental protection uh has granted the approval or was granted the permit for you to move forward on this.
Correct.
Okay, um, can you flesh out a little bit more? Uh, you testified to a comment about the five thirty seven plan had a previous road and that this is a deviation from that, from that road, but that's not accurate, correct? I just want to pull that out a little bit more.
That is correct. That is not accurate.
And the reason why it's not accurate is why?
Because during the five thirty seven plan, we simply identified the means in which we were going to provide adequate sewage disposal to the residents and to the, the folks of, of Newtown Township. Which included public sewer as the primary alternative for adequate sewage disposal. In that plan, we contemplated several locations for proposed pump stations and identif- and I identified them on uh several different properties. Uh, in this particular case, it was identified to be in the southern portion of the old masters property. We did work with the D P to discuss if we move that pump station. Is that going to affect the plan? Uh, and the answer was, well, if you are consistent with the plan showing what property you're on. Uh, you're not changing the tributary area of that pump station. In other words, it's not going to affect how many people are served by that pump station. As long as you generally identify where it's going to be located, that's sufficient for five thirty seven plan. When we went to implement the five thirty seven plan um and designed the sanitary sewer system. We got further into detail as to how the pump station was going to be accessed, where it was going to be located, what elevations it would be set at, uh, more of the finer details of the design.
Got it. With regards to comment letters from the township arborists, is that all will comply eventually?
Township arborists, um, comment letters were under the subdivision land development ordinance, which doesn't apply.
Thank you, Mr. Madron. Appreciate that. Wish that wasn't in the transcript. Yeah. Can you speak just briefly? Um, well, actually, I don't need you to speak briefly. I was going to ask about the road stabilization that Mr. Supervisor Russo asked, but I believe that you testified um to the type of material it's going to be as well as uh additional uh supporting materials to make sure the road is stabilized, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, the last question that I have for you is this, what is your uh definition and the application of feasible?
Definition of feasible?
Yeah. Or Mr. Mad?
Let's assume that feasible means possible for the sake of our.
Could this be, could, do, do any of the proposed roadways? Is it feasible to do it without uh impacting steeps?
No. Very eloquent way of getting around it. It wasn't great, but um, I'll take.
I have no more questions if anyone else does.
Yeah, I just had one, one good question. Um, and you might have answered it already, so I apologize. What was the, uh, what was the reason that it was not feasible or I guess not preferable? To use the temporary easement that's up there? Or was that not even a consideration?
So there, there's two, two issues there. One is we didn't get a permanent easement there, right? So we got um a permanent easement up to the point where we um come on to Mr. Rafferty's property and from the point where we leave. Um, so we, we would have had to condemn that uh corner as well. Um, had we condemned that corner, we probably wouldn't have gotten the permanent easements that we got because we would have been in a different posture with that landowner. Um, in addition, um, it's more impactful upon the steep slopes to come around that way than it is to go across.
I just have two questions real quick. Two hundred and five um equivalent dwelling units that are potentially impacted as we sit here today, right? Um, how many of them are residential properties? You know, that's just ballpark it.
Ballpark approximately a hundred and sixty.
How long have they been waiting for this to, to get resolved?
This particular issue?
This one particular issue?
Approximately two years.
Okay, and how much land are we talking about that, that, that we're, we're going over on the Rafferty side, just out of curiosity?
It's approximately a hundred and sixty lineal feet by twenty feet wide.
Thank you. Anyone else from the board? Okay.
I'm sorry, I do have a, just as a follow-up to the chairman's question about the residence. So if you were granted um your relief, um, when would, can, when would all of this, when would the residents be able to start connecting into the sewer system?
Can I take a swing at that? This is the first step in the process, right? We have a, a party protestant, assuming no appeals. I think Dave can answer that.
Thank you for the clarification.
Uh, I would anticipate sometime in the spring of twenty twenty three.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Madron, do you have any redirect? Sorry, Mr.
So is the electric to the pump station complete, not complete, we are waiting on this? What is the holdup till the spring?
So, so the electric is waiting on the access drive as part of the, as part of the easement that was granted. We agreed to run, make an adjustment to the proposed electric and run that coincident with the access driveway.
To the side of it, like a telephone, on telephone poles?
Underground.
Underground? So you're, so you're running from Westchester Pike all the way back eighteen hundred feet underground?
Correct. Yes.
And that was to get the easement from the other owners?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just, I just have a follow-up. So you, you mentioned when I asked the question about the timing and you said about the appeal. This is, this has been already that this has gone through the court, correct? This was appealed, not, not the land development, I understand. Land development is what our purview is with this. But all the other easements?
So, so, so your purview is zoning here, actually.
Okay.
Um, as far as the easements, the um only one that ended up in litigation was the uh condemnation of these men across, across the Rafferty Subaru property. Um, that has been through the Court of Common Pleas, which is the initial level. Um, with a fa- uh ruling favorable to the municipal authority. Uh, the Rafferty Trust appealed that ruling uh to the Commonwealth Court. Um, as part of doing that, they also requested a stay. A stay would mean that no further action toward implementing the plan could be taken because we couldn't use that portion of the property. That stay was denied. Um, argument occurred two weeks ago on that and we're awaiting a decision from the Commonwealth Court. But because the stay was denied, we have the opportunity to implement the uh, the plan now.
Any other questions from the board? Um, Mr. Madron, do you have any redirect for your witness?
Don't.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there any recross, Mr. Rafferty? Okay. Okay, so Mr. Rafferty, do you have a case you want to present? The ability to present a case as a party protestant? Did you get that, Tom? All the comments, that'll be fine. Okay. Then we will go on.
So we're going to rest and we're going to request the admission of A one through seven, I believe.
That's correct. All right.
I had three, Caship had three.
Yeah.
They were all.
All right, so we are going to go off the record and do public comment and then we'll come back on the record and we will deliberate and vote. We'll now move to public comment.
Patty Wilson, forty-one eleven, Battles Lane. Um, as a starting point.
Patty, that's on, right?
It is.
Okay.
This, as a starting point, the definition of feasible is possible. Um, the original planned road was feasible and as such, the ordinance requires that if, if there is something that's feasible, an alternative alignment or location is feasible, then that should be considered. When this applicant made their application, they very clearly stated the original location of the driveway. So I know that they went on the record to speak in um to make many more descriptions of why they no longer want to do that road. That they, that they would have to come into steep and very steep slopes regardless. Your job as a board is to mitigate the environmental impact and I have heard no testimony tonight that would suggest that there was any other alternative considered beyond this. And they very clearly state that the reason for that is because the owners of the golf course prepared development plans. And they didn't want the road where it was originally proposed, where it was originally proposed as part of permitting documentation, all of which started in two thousand fifteen. So the notion that we are now talking about this in two thousand twenty-two and the notion that somehow Mr. Rafferty or anyone else is responsible for those folks in Florida Park not having sewage should not be because we're we're now suggesting that Mr. Rafferty is unreasonable. We should hold accountable those who were responsible for this project. And for whatever reason, it chose to work for however long they chose to work with an existing landowner to put an easement where they wanted to be versus look at the property at the whole impact the steep and very steep slopes. I heard no testimony tonight that this particular road is an indicator that it is the least impact environmentally. Um, I, I would also say that the other part of this is, one of the things that was said tonight was that part of the reason to move the road also was to give consideration for the fact that the residents of Florida Park did not want a road to the pump station through their neighborhood. Nor did the people in Echo Valley at the end of Crumb Creek want a pump station at the end of their street. Nor did the folks in Listener. We as a township and as a municipal authority hasn't, have not used access via a neighborhood to a pump station as a reason to move a road. So, so that particular argument doesn't hold as to why we've now spent years clearly just trying to appease a developer. We as a township, it is my belief, should not be making changes because of a development request or because somebody has a development plan. You as a board should be looking at this plan and ensuring that whatever road is determined to go to that pump station truly has the least environmental impact. Um, I'm going to finally say, you know, the other thing that's disturbing to me as a long time resident is to hear what certainly sounds to as a long town road resident a, an effort to badmouth a commercial resident here, the Rafferty family who have been in business for decades have been good community partners. And now to hear somehow it's Rafferty that's holding this up. It's not Rafferty holding this up. It is not Rafferty, in my view, that's been unreasonable. Quite frankly, this notion that we, we even destroyed Rafferty's property in the pro- process of this to me as a resident is a horrible reflection on those that are implementing this plan. So I'm going to urge you in looking at conditional use to follow the ordinance, which says was something feasible, it was. And as a result of that, this should not be approved and you should be asking them go into this land and look at the least environmental impact and put the road there or put it where you originally proposed because theoretically, that's what you thought had the least impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Anyone else for public comment? It, it's, let's, you want to, it's up to you if you want to or not. Okay.
There's myself again, are we okay?
Uh, yeah, just give your name um for our records.
Bob Rafferty.
And your address there, Mr. Rafferty.
Forty-seven hundred West Chester Pike.
Thank you, sir.
Um, two comments for the board. Um, obviously you are aware this is an illegal situation, legal matter. Um, as far as holding this up, uh, it's my opinion that the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania will not decide on this matter for probably four to six months. Um, quite honestly, I'm standing here in front of you depending on what happens at that situation. One of us will probably appeal that situation. If the other side loses, I'm pretty sure they will appeal. And I'm telling you right now, if we lose, I want to see what my additional potential opportunities are to continue to defend this. So this could be held up for quite some time. Again, um, Patty, thank you for your comments. Uh, I am looking like the bad guy in the room, but um, I don't really think I am. Uh, Mr. Nice, maybe you can comment when we refer to your code. And I referred to this earlier about a feasible plan that was on the table. There was a feasible plan that was pulled off the table by Mr. Deeperton. But Steve was at a meeting in two thousand nineteen. He was shocked. Mr. Porter was shocked and Mr. Porter doesn't recall that meeting. Steve, if you want to comment on that?
So don't answer that.
Don't answer it.
Um, you can continue to tell, you can, this is public comments. We're not going to get no question and answer. So you can continue to go on that and say what you want to say, but.
Basically, it was the, the, the proposed plan, as Patty referenced, uh, has been on the books for quite some time. Uh, it was immediately pulled off the books in two thousand nineteen sometime by his developer next door. Only because of his potential future development. Which in my opinion, the board has I guess I've been through the wringer a little bit with your boards over the years and I'm not afraid to say that. I have to ask, is it common practice? For the boards to approve? Trying to think of the right word here. What to approve a plan before it is even presented in front of a board? For example, I stood here October twenty seventh at a planning commission meeting. I have the letter dated October tenth. That the municipal authority requested the same petition. Would you find it unreasonable? That I strongly suspect that was approved prior to the meeting ever happening?
I don't even know.
You don't know where I'm going?
I have no idea what document you're looking at or anything.
Well, I have a letter from Andy. Date is October twenty seventh. The same date you had the meeting. And ironically enough, was postmarked October twenty-sixth. The day before you even had the planning commission meeting. Indicating the meeting scheduled for November fourteenth approving the petition on the twenty-seventh. I have those if you'd like to see them. You look a little surprised.
Minister, I'm serious.
I'll show you. Who should I show it to? You don't send them out?
No, we don't send out letters of, of the planning commission approving anything. It's a recommended, a recommending body.
Okay, well, it's recommended, but it's sent out before the meeting exists.
Okay, if I could.
And I received the copy Friday morning. I walked out of this meeting nine o'clock. Give me one second. I have a pile period. I walked out of the meeting on the twenty-seventh, nine o'clock at night. I had a letter like that.
We'll hold a meeting on November fourteenth. During this meeting, a review of the Newtown Township Municipal Authority project located at the old masters property. At forty-six forty West Chester Pike will occur. So this is telling you that two weeks from then, there's going to be a meeting to consider approval of what we're here for tonight. This application requires conditional use approval to allow an access drive in areas of steep and very steep slopes in accordance with chapter one. What he's talking about is following the planning commission meeting. He received a letter saying that they're going to have a public notice of a hearing. He received a letter saying that they're going to have a public notice of a hearing. Uh, he, this was, he got public notice of a hearing here, but that does not assume or refute what, what the planning commission did or did not do. That's a, the, the planning commission is a step along the way. When you go to a hearing, that's what the board considers. So if the planning commission had recommended no or had recommended conditions, you still have to come here to get ultimate resolution of his application. If you don't hold that hearing at a time of the matter, it's, it's deemed approved.
You typically wait for approval?
No.
Well.
I wasn't Gavin Williams on the same letter. They were on the same night here.
Let me see. This is the notice. Yeah, I mean, this letter's not, this, this letter's not addressed to anybody. It's to current resident on the envelope. And this letter just says, it's a date. It's, it's addressed to notice.
That is a meeting on the October 10th meeting. A Gavin Williams also made an appeal.
Okay, October 10th, notice.
Right.
But you don't know whether that applicant requested a continuance. So when you, whenever something is submitted, whenever something is submitted to the township, the municipality planning code essentially applies to, you know, a litany of things, governs timing. So as the solicitor just said, I'm telling you what the MPC says. What the solicitor is just saying is that the planning commission is a step along the way. If the township fails to schedule those hearings, the application is deemed as approved. That you could have, I'm sorry, anyone could have come. Let's say I had an application on that, that night and I, you know, didn't get a recommend, I, I could see that I wasn't going to get a recommendation from the planning commission. The other meeting might still be scheduled, but I'm asking for a continuance. I, I govern the, the applicant controls the clock, right? So it wasn't, there was nothing to your assertion that there was somehow the deal was made based off of the township following the MPC by issuing the notice letters is just not accurate.
It's not even close to accurate.
It's standard practice of the township.
It was never standard practice in the two years I was going through this process. I always had it in approval before I could go to Plan B. Every meeting I attended, and I was here for two years.
The, the planning commission.
Never standard practice, at least you didn't share the same standard practice with me.
So real quick, just to clear this up a little bit more, the planning commission isn't, uh, the planning commission's a purely recommending body, right? So you could go before the planning commission for anything and they, they could say no and you could still move your application forward if you wanted to. So it, it's the same process that's governed for whatever the application is, the same procedure that's followed time in and time out. As the township manager said, it's standard operating procedure and standard practice. I can guarantee you that you might have gotten these letters before and it wasn't anything that was important. I mean, we all get these, we don't all get them, but sometimes you, you hear people who get a zoning letter, right? And they don't pay any attention to it until they see the construction project happening right next to their house.
Well, he had an engineer and attorney representing him through that process. They're the ones who get the notice of, of when the meetings are going to be. They're the ones who drive that process and give the requisite extensions to the township. So if the planning commission had said, we want you to come back, then the, the applicant's attorney then has a, a decision to make, hey, I'm going to grant an extension to the township. I want to go back to satisfy the planning commission. There was, you know, it's different application, different relief sought, uh, different process. It was a different party. It's just, none of that really adds up, what you said.
Okay. When you referred to a potential feasible road, have any of you walked the golf course?
The, like, the.
Yes, the current golf or driven a golf cart around the current golf course.
So I will say, I, I started getting into the slippery slope of answering all these questions. I was trying to help you out with the notice because I think you had everyone, you know, confused there, but I, we're not going to get.
I don't think I had anybody confused. I'm not surprised with your answer, but that's okay.
Well, I'm not surprised.
I'm just telling my.
Understand a complicated process like.
Because of what I went through for two years.
Okay. So with that being said, we're not going to get into a back and forth and question and answer, but continue with your questions.
Just the plan is still up. Uh, I am familiar with the golf course layout. And if you come in the same road that he has planned or for West Chester Pike, I'm going to refer to it by holes. That would be on the western side of the eighth hole. On the eastern side of the, of, of the eighth hole is a current golf cart path. You go to the top of the hill, there's very, very little interruption on that golf cart path. Through the seventh green. You go down the seventh green to, I believe it's the sixth tee box. Or the seventh tee box coming back up the hill. There's golf cart paths in existence currently. And you do not have to disturb any slope or steep slope. My recommendation might be to drive the course or walk the course. And you can see that the path is already there. Come in on West Chester Pike?
In West Chester Pike here. This is the eighth driveway goes up from here somewhere. This is the eighth green. Uh, the golf cart path, I'm taught, thank you for that, comes on here. And up through here, and I believe you go down this way. There's some greens back in here. Proposed road is over here. Golf cart path already exists. Take the right into the pump station. There is a feasible plan, it's already there.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rafferty. It's for Madron, if you want to. Okay? Okay. Any other members who wish to boo, who wish to do public comment? All right, Tom, we'll go back on the record. We're on the record? Perfect, thank you, Tom. The applicant is rested. The exhibits have been admitted into the record, A1 through A7. I'll now turn it over to the board for public comment. All right, that's, thank, thank you, Mr. Russo, for board comment. Any members of the board? Okay. Guess we don't have any public comment or board comment out here. Uh, the only thing I will add is the only thing that I will add. It is unfortunate to me that the residents of this township, specifically the ones in this area, have been going through what they've been going through with regards to their sewer situation. As much as the applicant had testimony that individuals go to their meetings and voice their concerns and frustrations, I think each and every one of us up here also get the same amount of, um, you know, frustration from the residents where they are pumping out weekly or monthly, where, you know, they are, they, they can't sell their houses or they can't move forward with certain things because they are in this holding cell or in this holding pattern. Based off of the testimony tonight, um, I do believe that the applicant, in my personal opinion, has achieved their criteria to be granted a conditional use approval for disturbance of the very steep slope, uh, and, uh, steep slope areas, um, as was reiterated by the applicant. You know, it is for the very steep slope, one thirty-four dash seven A to E. Road or access driveways provide access to a permitted use that permitted use of the pump station. If the board of supervisors determines no alternative alignment or location is feasible. Definition of feasible is possible to do easily or conveniently. The applicant, in my opinion, testified that it is not easily or easy or convenient to do the road in any other manner in which it is today. The insinuation that the municipal authority, and though I don't have a dog in this fight, the insinuation that the municipal authority is somehow moving things around to benefit a land developer, uh, is not looking at the whole picture and quite frankly is misleading. We talked about condemnation, the amount of money that it would cost in condemnation after a plan has been submitted or proposed would go up astronomically. They took into effect or into account the complaints from the residents. They moved the, they moved the road to benefit, uh, the residents to the point that, you know, they didn't care about other properties. I don't have an answer to that. I wasn't involved in it, then no one on this board was involved in it. What we have today is what we're involved in. I am just sickened that these residents are not going to, it's evident tonight that these residents, no matter how those board rules, which I hope is in favor of this conditional use application, they are not going to have any relief. And I understand that individuals from a legal perspective need to file to protect their interests, but I think that it is, it is a sad day in this township when two hundred and, well, one hundred and thirty residents, uh, are going to be further subjected to this, uh, when we could all come together as a community and, and have this resolved. But for the matters for the conditional use application, I do believe that the applicant has met the criteria and I will be voting in favor of this. Any other board comment? Go get them, Mr. Partridge.
Well, not so much a comment.
I, I thought of another question.
They wouldn't be that rich. If he rests.
Maybe I'll ask, can I ask Rich a question?
Yeah, I mean, if, if he rests, he can still answer questions. Who's that? Who, who's it for? Is it for the applicant?
Well, yeah, it should be directed to the applicant, but I don't, Rich might know the answer. I don't know.
Good.
Rich, do you know the, um, the frequency of the access needed?
I don't, I have an estimation. I don't think I'd be accurate. You want to, we're, we're just going to reopen the record to ask the question.
Okay, so we're going to reopen. Okay, so the question is, uh, the frequency of access to the pump station via the proposed driveway.
Exactly.
Currently, the municipal authority engages with a wastewater operator. That wastewater operator is KBX Golden. It's KBX Golden. They operate and maintain all of the pump stations in the township. Currently, they access each pump station week, daily during weekdays. They do not monitor on the weekends. They do not access during holidays. They are on call for emergency purposes. So if there's, uh, something that happens, um, an alarm goes off on the pump station, they will have somebody available immediately to attend to that emergency. So that's the regular basis that the pump station will be accessed by one pickup truck or utility van per day during the weekday. On an annual or biannual basis, we'll have a larger, kind of like a pumper truck, uh, access the pump station to clean out the wet well to make sure that there's no floatables or anything that could possibly damage the pumps. There's also liquid propane tanks that power an emergency engine-driven backup pump. So if the power goes out, that pump automatically kicks on, um, depending on how often that is used and how much the liquid propane is depleted with warrant refilling probably on a biannual or annual basis. There is also an odor control system there that, uh, requires maintaining and, and filling for bioxide odor control, and that's on a biannual basis. Um, and those trucks are, I mean, you're looking at, you know, a propane truck is a typical residential delivery truck. The bioxide truck would be a typical, you know, tanker truck, small tanker truck of that nature.
Oh, I have a, oh, question at this point. So other than KBX or potentially somebody from the township, um, is access, uh, to the road pretty much restricted to other parties other than KBX or potentially?
To the best of my knowledge, I believe yes. Uh, and I say that because I believe there are some rights to access by the, the private property owner, um, in and across that easement, not necessarily using the driveway for access, but they're allowed to, to cross that easement for their purposes.
Would it be, uh, common practice, um, for an access road like this to, to have signage, uh, stipulating that, um, uh, it's not a public access road? Okay, all right, that's, that's all, thank you.
The entrance is probably chained anywhere or gated. Leasing is down on, on other ones I've seen.
It, it could be.
The one on, the one on two fifty-two is changed.
You're certainly correct. Some of our pump stations do have gated, locked gated access to them, which the wastewater operator obviously has a key to access the pump station for their maintenance. In this case, we do not propose anything, but that's certainly something the board, if they wanted to put it.
I'm not sure we have the easement space to put bollards there or, or, or an access gate. I mean, maybe something narrow, so.
Chain?
If that, yeah, I'm sure if that's going to be a condition, please don't get carried away with it because we have to stay within the order.
So I'm, I'm in, so I'm interested in a sign and chain.
All right, so let's get, um, so do you have any, does anyone have any questions left for?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry. Follow-up question to the ads about the, the access and the, and the truck size. It was, um, suggested earlier that other neighborhoods have, uh, not wanted it in, in their, um, area where their sections, the, uh, pump stations and the road, the access road. But, um, just for context, Florida Park is a, is a smaller, the roads there seem to be, they're, they're to township size, but it's a, it's, it's a cul-de-sac. It's not a, um, correct, uh, Florida Park that is the name. If we had, if you would use the original roadway, I guess, let me put it in context. You would use the original roadway, um, these trucks going through that neighborhood. Do, do you see what I'm asking, Rich?
I think you're misunderstanding what they were saying. It's, it was a driveway.
Right.
Ran behind the house that are in Florida Park. It wasn't through Florida Park.
Oh, so we'd go behind the houses, the driveway.
It was like, yeah, the people were complaining they didn't want the access driveway running parallel with their backyards.
Okay.
I, I think.
Yeah, I just wanted context because it was suggested, you know, that we're, we're moving something because a neighbor is not wanting something, but we did. I know we'd been in one of the other, I think Ed and I were on the board when there was another pump station issue, um, but we tried to work through with the neighbor, or the municipal authority worked through that on the neighborhood.
I think, I think our purpose is that it was a factor we considered. It wasn't the only factor.
Right, sleep slow and, yep. Okay.
Be appropriate to allow the protestant to, if you had any follow-up questions?
I agree with that, Mr. Score. The Mr. Rafferty, do you have anything you want to follow up on?
If I may.
Record can reflect that Mr. Rafferty said no.
If I may, just one thing, because I, I think you used the word convenient or feasible. And I know there is a definition of feasible as convenient. I think the, I think just for the purposes of the board, when you're considering this application, I think a, a better definition, if I may, would be, is, is there another route that's possible but reasonable as compared to this route? Meaning, anything can be done if you have enough time, money, or, uh, uh, power, right? So, so anything, almost anything is possible, but is it reasonable in scope, expense and ability to do that? I think that's a fair, fair measure to compare whether an alternate road, route with this access driveway is feasible.
And even with that, my position is still, there is not.
You, you, you know, by way of argument, we have rights, right? We have rights, uh, uh, property rights. So if you had a homeowner who wanted to construct a driveway in steep slopes, wouldn't say, well, you could come in from next door, you know, and not go through the steep slopes. I mean, just because we have condemnation power doesn't mean that it's the purview of the board of supervisors to tell the authority how to use their condemnation power, right? We've acquired these rights. These are the rights we have. So if you wanted to move it over a little bit within the easement area, that's one thing. But to tell us to go acquire a different property, I think it's beyond the purview beyond the purview of this board.
I'm sorry, I need to hold this thing.
Perfect. Um, all right, were you, we're going to, you rest. You, uh, you rest, right? Closing you out? Thank you, you re-rest. Um, all right, so I don't think any other board members have anything else that they want to say. So, um, I will make a motion. So, um, I will make a motion, uh, that we, uh. Prove the conditional use requested, um, by the municipal authority, uh, with the following conditions. And I don't know how we want to phrase this. Uh, chain link fence on the entrance or signage on the entrance?
Chain. It's a chain like we have in 232 at, at the. Two bollards and chain, just for that way. Oh, that's it.
Right.
Just, just a chain with a lock. And two pole, two bollards.
Thank you, Tom. Any other conditions that this board wants to impose?
Chain and a sign that it's not a public.
No problem with that? What else? Okay, so the motion now will fully read, um, to prove the conditional use application of the Newtown Township Municipal Authority. For the Old Masters Pump Station. Do you need to get any more specific with that? You with that? To include a condition of a chain link. Of a chain with two bollards. And signage designated that it is not a public thoroughfare. Not a public, strike that. It's not a public, private access. Public access, thank you. That's my motion. Is there a second? Motion was made by the chair, seconded by supervisor Russo. Is there, uh, any other board discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone.
Decision will be forwarded to the protesting and the applicant. And that will trigger the appeal rights.
Perfect.
The binding of the appeal, I should say.
And we will go off the record at, uh, 9:22. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now move down to board comment. There's only two things I just want to mention. The, remind everyone about the tree lighting ceremony on December 4th from five to seven, um, over at St. Albans Circle. As we all know, we got a brand new tree. So come on out and see, get decorated. We'll now move down to public comment. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to do any public comments, please come up to the podium. State your name and address for the record.
Abby Wilson, 4111 Battle Flane. I have two comments because so much was said after my last public comment. Not the least of which is feasible means possible. So you can pull up Google, you can do whatever. But if we have not defined feasible in our ordinance. Then making up what feasible is in these circumstances. To, to me is making it up. The second thing is part of what you have not asked this applicant to do was to offer you any alternatives. So yes, this is what they've come in with. This is what in their application they said. As originally designed would interfere with the proposed development plans and the owner asked the municipal authority to consider alternate locations. So, so everyone is clear here. The original plan was something they thought was a good idea. The developer said, I have a development plan and they. At the behest of the developer said, okay, we'll consider other locations. In my view, what should have happened at that point was either with this board or with the. People in the area or certainly with the, the Raffertys is to say, let's consider some other alternatives. Um, maybe that developer doesn't like it. Maybe Mr. Rafferty doesn't like it, but if it had lesser impact. On steep and very steep slopes, which clearly if you look at that area, there was another way to do it. That's what my view is this board should have done. My second comment is related to comments about what the budget doesn't, doesn't do. It doesn't matter what our tax rate is. It, it's not a great idea to say to people, we're the lowest tax rate. If we don't look at what are the services we provide. So many other townships provide full trash pickup. And in this township, because we, we do private trash. That means there is an additional cost to the homeowner that in another township would have been included in their taxes. So in reality, to say, if we do a 4% tax increase, this is what it translates to the homeowner. No, this is the 4% tax increase and also the additional $500 a year that it costs to have our tax picked up. In, i- if we're starting to do comparisons, it might be worthwhile as a board to consider looking at services that other townships provide. And then look at their rate versus saying our rate is low. This is not to denigrate the services. We have an. Awesome public works department. They, the, I had complimented George and I hope everybody compliments George because the leaf pickup is a service. That is unparalleled. And if we could just get residents to not put the leaves in the streets. To leave them on their lawn, to not create a hazard. I think we'd all be better served here, but, but when you look at the budget. Please look at it in terms of what are the services you want to provide as a board? And is there a way to more economically do it so that maybe when you go to look at the recycling contract, you can now say. Let's do trash and recycling now. And if that means everybody pays a hundred dollars more in taxes, but $500 less to the trash hauler. It's a win for everybody. So, you know, I, I would urge you to speak from the residents, what, what else are you looking for? For this township to do, because I know that's one thing I would love to see done. And I, I'm not sure we've gotten there. I, i- if the over worry is what are we charging for taxes? Let's, let's have it line up with what do we provide in services? Thank you.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. The only thing I'll add is that we are, as you know, constricted to what we can and cannot do under the second class township code. All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.